I'll ask for motion to approve today's agenda.
Approve today's agenda?
I'll second that.
Discussion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approval of the minutes from August 7th and also August 15th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from August 7th and August 15th as presented.
I will second.
Discussion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approval of the claims for payment for August 22nd and August 28th.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims for payment for August 22nd and 28th.
I will second.
Any discussion? Okay.
Um, like I said before, I normally call the auditor's office and ask these questions. But proposed. Um, egg advantage.
Egg advantage? That's fuel, isn't it?
Fuel could be LP, could be contracted fuel. LP, could be. Without them answering their question. Are you talking a total dollar amount, egg advantage? So that could be Dave's bill, that could be Taylor's bill.
If it's 40 grand, it's probably a diesel field.
Yes, 45. Calhoun, Burmese, and Associates.
Yep, that's me.
What'd you do?
They inspect our bridges for us.
Oh, okay. Converb 1. Eighty-six, eight thousand six hundred.
What department was that in, do you know?
It doesn't show the departments on those.
I'd have to go to the claims list.
I've never heard of that one. Probably not me either.
We'd have to have the list in front of us to know whose department it was to ask.
I have that in the office that I can get to you afterwards and then we can... Well, and the auditor's office is closed this week for training. But we can get the information for you.
That's Taylor again.
That's Taylor.
Yep, they'd seal the cracks and the real through that through.
Okay. What did I write? Government Connection, GOV. It's not on that list. GovConnection, Inc.
I'm not positive. I'm guessing that might be IT, but I'm not positive. So, that's another... I can get the list for you after the meeting and we can look at that.
And Iowa Falls State Bank, 283,000.
Yep, that's me. That's our loan for motor graders.
Oh, okay. Here, Mr. Moore.
Yes, it was... It's not been a fun year.
And then between this one and the next one, Summit Food, LCC.
That's...
Total of almost 12,000.
That's David.
Okay, thank you.
That's it?
That's...
Okay. All right. Okay, so any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on the proposed budget decrease and appropriations. What this is, is there was money budgeted in the board of supervisors' budget, our department budget, of $80,000, which was earmarked for an economic development employee. And since we have hired Angela for that position, we've set up her own department. So we need to transfer that money from the supervisors' budget to the Economic Development Department budget. And also, there's money budgeted in the non-departmental fund or department of $112,000. I believe that is the lost funds. And they're earmarked for economic development also. So, I talked to Jessica and she... And it makes sense to me, too, that we have all the economic development stuff in one department. That does not mean that Angela can spend that $112,000. That's money that has to be approved by the board in order to be spent. So anyway, we're moving those two amounts from prior departments to the Economic Development Department for a total of $192,000. So, I would entertain any questions or comments anybody has in regard to that.
The $112,000, what was that earmarked for? I mean, what is it used for?
We currently have 100... I believe it's 112,000. I can't tell you the exact dollar amount without the auditor. But this is that money, that 10% that we take out of lost funds for economic development. We earmark it so that it's available if we need it at any time.
Available for what?
For any projects that come up unknown. We don't know. We can use it for economic development or community betterment. Prime example, we used some for the Radcliffe.
For that building. We just recently approved that.
We've also used some for the Dennis. That grant we did there. This is money that this can be used for. It's not ear-tagged anything. It's available, but it's a rollover. It can only be spent on these projects. Otherwise, it will just keep building in the pot.
Any other questions or comments?
How would that impact, you know, future projects? You know, like another Radcliffe or some other project that would come up? Does that then go through Angela? Does that go through the supervisors?
It has to go through the board.
But through Angela?
It's just in her department.
Right. I mean, she would like... She would be the one that would present it?
No, either Mark, her or Mark. We have...
They're county funds, so... Or it could be a request of anybody without going through economic development.
Like the dentists?
Right.
Correct. If I remember, it then went through... Yeah.
But they actually presented it?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, and I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and ask for a motion on the resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to do the transfer to the Economic Development Department, line item 11.
I will second.
Any further discussion? Cheryl, roll call, please.
BJ?
Aye.
Lance?
Aye.
Renee?
Aye. Okay, approval of the official county digital seal.
I talked to Jessica on that. That's the seal. They have to have something to be in compliance. It doesn't mean that all the counties, their little stamp seal, they have to change that. But if they wanted to, they could look at something like that as well. But in order to be compliant, we need to have that.
I think this is... I think they're going to require this to be put on ballots, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
So that's mainly what this is for, so... They had to come up with something.
What, underneath the little building, 42HCIA, I get that Harden County, Iowa. But what does the rest of that mean?
TR means treasure.
It's required to refer to the treasurer since she's the keeper of the books.
County 42.
Don't your license plates all start with that, Dave?
All your bridge projects start with 42.
Well, once it's on the car, it's a tendency as long as the plate's still there.
Why are you departing... Excuse me. Why are you departing from the seal that appears atop of our head?
That's just the county, kind of a county logo.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Continuity's sake.
Actually, oh, Jess, did you have...
This is black and white, so you don't have to... If it's getting printed on treasure stuff, you don't have to make color.
Okay.
Just a thought.
I mean, this will be mainly used on ballots if somebody... If any other departments decide to use it, they can. But, I don't know. I imagine we would remain with this, but I guess we haven't really discussed it. Just...
Today, it's unfortunate that Auditor Laura isn't here to discuss that.
I don't even know who all was involved with coming up with that, so...
Yeah, well, I guess it'll be seen by people casting votes.
Right.
And then internally after that, to verify somehow that it was indeed cast.
Yeah, evidently.
All right. I think your logo is neater than that.
Maybe, but as a stamp, I don't think there's so much involved.
Yeah, because it is a... Well, it will be printed most of the time if we have a seal made with that.
And I did talk to her. If we were to convert that to the actual stamp, it won't be... The courthouse won't have such a design. To stamp that would be almost impossible.
Mainly for...
Yeah, it would be outlined a little. Lot less in it.
Oddball questions slightly off the mark, but voting is brought on. Why do Harden County voters go to City Hall, but the Eldora voters go to the Harden County?
That's a question for the county auditor. It's been that way for years.
Good question.
Yeah. It's kind of a lack of places to go and trying to find something centrally located. I mean, that was my reason when I was county auditor. Something... Because there's multiple townships that... The vote there, so... Finding someplace big enough with the room and everything, so...
And hopefully sometime it'll transfer to the EOC building over down the road here, a block. But Emergency Management.
Might be a possibility.
But we need more parking at this time.
Right. Okay, so we've had a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have a resolution for tax abatement. Evidently, there are two properties. This is another thing with the auditor's office. There are two properties that are having the taxes abated on them. And the title to the property will go to the city of Eldora for both of these properties. So... There's actually two resolutions. So we'll do the one first regarding the property locally known as 1504 Sixth Avenue in Eldora.
I'd make a motion to approve the tax abatement for the address of 1504 Sixth Avenue, Eldora, Iowa, as presented.
Second.
Any motion and a second? Roll call, please, Cheryl. Oh, go ahead.
If this property was being transferred to a private citizen, although it did over to the trailer court over there, would you do that for a private citizen?
I'd take the recommendation of the treasurer.
Yeah. I know we have abated taxes in the past just to get it to a new owner and get it back on the tax rolls where taxes are paid. So I know that it's been done before.
We've done this in Alden here recently. To an empty lot. Nobody's paying taxes on it to get it back on the tax roll and to put it to an owner. Yes?
The city will likely want to dispose of it one way or another.
And get it back on the roll, the tax roll, yep.
So then will this cost for the abated taxes transfer to the new owner? No, it's just permanently gone.
Right. Okay, Cheryl.
Roll call. BJ?
Aye.
Lance?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we have the same tax abatement for the property at 1901 14th Avenue in Eldora.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution abating the taxes at the address of 1901 14th Avenue, Eldora, Iowa, as presented.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Okay, roll call, please.
BJ?
Aye.
Lance?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, utility permits and secondary roads.
No permits. Our contract's rock. One of the contracts should get done today or tomorrow. The big one. Farm-to-market roads.
Oh, that's...
It's all over, yep. Yep, the bridge, West United Spires, it just got done. It's been a long 18 months, so we're going to hopefully get that road rocked and open soon. So things are moving.
Good.
There's been concerns about our gravel roads going into the future. So it's been discussed that I should ask you guys for... Would you sit down and have a brainstorming session on what we can do for funding?
Okay.
You know, we're tapped out every year.
Right.
So I don't know how to do more than already doing. So I'm open to meet with you guys anytime.
Okay. All right, we'll get our schedules together.
Wednesday.
Just let me know and I'll be available.
Okay. All right. Okay. Open secondary roads, equipment bids.
Okay, I don't have any with me, but I was talking to... Dale Howard called me. And I can't get in the auditor's office upstairs, so I thought maybe you could just come back to this and I'll go upstairs. See if somebody can get me in there and check that mailbox at least.
You can get in the back. Back way.
That's your car? I'll be back then.
Okay.
Are you going to come back down for the meeting, so? Okay.
Okay, change of status in the auditor's office. We've got a number of those.
I will start by approving the retirement of Nancy Lawver. She was the deputy auditor. She served since 1994 and her retirement date was or will be August 28th, 2019.
I will second that.
Okay. Just to note, Jessica has a note on there. "We happily wish Nancy the best retirement and enjoyment possible. She has served Harden County since 1994 and will be greatly missed." Okay. So all those in favor say aye.
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 The next I have is the resignation of Tina Schlumey from the auditor's office. She has taken a position in the private sector. Her final day will be August 28th, 2019.
I will second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Next is promotion and a pay increase for Mindy McClellan. She, effective August 28th, should be the first deputy to the auditor at a salary of $41,682, which is 65% of the auditor's salary. Jessica's notes, Mindy has been employed in the auditor's office since 2013 and is being promoted to first deputy.
Second.
Any discussion?
It's an exempt position.
All those in favor say aye.
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 The next is a pay increase for Rebecca Junker. She will be payroll and benefits manager in the auditor's office, effective August 28th, 2019. Jessica's notes, Becca is being reassigned to payroll and employee benefits from drainage. Her background and education is in employee benefits and HR, and this is a great opportunity for her to work in her chosen field.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Change of status, sheriff's office.
The first one I have is a resignation of a permanent part-time correctional officer, Kimberly Jones, effective August 22nd, 2019.
I will second.
Discussion? Those in favor say aye.
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 Next is the hiring of a permanent part-time correctional officer, Corey Cedarburg, at the rate of $15 an hour, effective August 21st, 2019.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Next is the resignation of communications dispatcher, Sarah Henley, effective August 21st, 2019.
Second.
Discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next I have is the hiring of permanent part-time dispatcher in the communications department at a rate of $15 an hour for Elizabeth Glade, effective August 29th, 2019.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the final one I have is the hiring of permanent part-time dispatcher in the communications department, effective August 27th, at $15 an hour, Sarah Knott.
I will second.
Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
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 Dave, do you have any more for us?
Okay, appointment to the Green Belt Home Care Board. I guess there's been conversation as far as BJ and I switching some boards or the possibility of that. So I would entertain motions for the appointment to the Green Belt Home Care Board.
I'll make the motion to approve the appointment of BJ to the Green Belt Home Care Board.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. An appointment to the emergency management board.
I'll make a motion to appoint Renee to the emergency management agency board.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Appointment to the 911 board.
I'll make the motion to appoint Renee to the E-911 board.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Appointment to Board of Health.
I'll make the appointment to appoint PJ to the Board of Health.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion?
In all these appointments that we've made, I'm assuming that the resignation coincides with these.
Correct.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And, okay, appropriation of lost funds towards the attendance at 2019-20 Leadership Iowa class.
I am requesting appropriations for the attendance to the Leadership Iowa class. It is a 10-month consortium collaboration group that I was nominated to attend by the vice president of marketing from Grinnell Reinsurance Corporation. And it has a tuition expense that includes the written materials and meals at the expense of $2,500. And I've got all the documentation here that I can share. And I would ask to be paid out of Department 89 through the lost funds for economic development and community betterment.
Angela, Mark. I know I've talked to you. I haven't talked to Mark on this before, but your opinion on this as well? The impact that it could be for economic development.
I'm in full support of it, you know. Like I said, we've all talked and I think this is... It is what community betterment is. It's going to be a lot of education for not a lot of money.
And I see one of the greatest benefits is once you're an alumni of the Leadership Iowa group, then you can nominate other local leaders for future classes. And so I see great potential in our county to, you know, keep pushing towards bringing, you know, more people of that leadership group to the county.
I'll make a motion to approve the $2,500 for the 2019-20 Leadership Iowa class for BJ to attend.
And I'll let you...
I'll second it.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
What are these classes found?
Oh, one is in Perry, one is in Iowa Falls, one is in Fort Dodge, one is in Des Moines, one is in Muscatine, one is in Council Plus, one is in Waverly, one is in Cedar Rapids.
Now, does this include travel costs?
I will be taking care of the mileage myself.
Any other discussion? All those in favor...
So then those costs will come as a claim?
Out of my pocket. No.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 I abstain.
Okay. All right, acknowledgement of the receipt of an animal feeding operation construction permit for Coroner Pork Site in Section 27 of Alden Township.
I'll make a motion to acknowledge the receipt from the DNR of the Animal Feeding Operation Construction Permit Application, Coroner Pork Site, Section 27 of Alden Township.
I will second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we need to set the date and time for a public hearing on the construction permit application.
Jessica, I know you do the timelines and you told me you had a couple times that...
The deadline is due. We can have the public hearing is September 19th, but we don't want to do it on that day, Friday. And we'd like to do the recommendation to the DNR at that Wednesday meeting of that week. So my request is that we do the public hearing on September 16th, which is Monday at 6:00 PM at the Alden Legion.
I'll make a motion...
Julie?
I would request that it be done earlier so you have time to consider objections that may come about this and that it be held here because we have seen... We have seen the Alden ones and I request that it be held here for... Just, I just request it be held here and be held earlier so you can consider objections that will arise.
Thank you. Well, I mean, the public hearing is two days before we give the recommendation to the DNR.
Well, there may be more complexities, so just say...
And I thought we always wanted to have it where in the area that the hospital was being built to give the people an active opportunity to give their...
We have done that in the past.
...closed down, so it affects everyone. So we need to be fair about this. Just say, "Thank you."
Would you like to restate your motion?
Yeah, I'm going to accept Jessica Sheridan's recommendation to hold the public hearing on September 16th, 2019, 6:00 PM at the Alden Legion Hall in Alden, Iowa.
I will second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public comments.
We may want to just announce that the east entrance is closed from today until Tuesday, September 3rd. We just found out about that and we apologize for any inconvenience that this is going to cause. Anybody that needs a handicap accessible to our building is not going to be able to enter during this time. If there's somebody that needs something, they just need to call the appropriate office. We'll do everything that we can to help them out and get their business satisfied. The only thing that I can think in my office that I can't do going back out and forth would be a driver's license issuance.
True. Okay.
We just found out this morning.
Okay, I hadn't heard that yet, so thank you.
And I apologize that I'm late today because I was trying to get that out to the radio.
Okay.
That's trying to put it on public, the website and Facebook and trying to get it out there so the public knows.
Good.
And that's all we can do is try our hardest to get that out.
Yeah.
We just found out this morning, so...
Okay. All right, thank you. Daryl?
That reminded me that part of the HVAC work that's being done on the county building, my office, Lion is going to need to turn the power off at 3 o'clock either today or tomorrow. And so when that happens, we will probably be... Probably going home. I don't know if the phones will still work, but just want everybody to know that.
Okay.
We don't know what day it's going to be. It could be today or tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, my question is about EMS services, the potential for EMS as an essential service resolution and referendum.
resolution and referendum. You know, we know from the meeting two weeks ago that EMS, the EMS coordinator's not going to run with that ball. I'm wondering if it's the board's thinking that you will appoint someone else to honcho that project going forward, or if you're going to look at other potential funding sources for ambulance services throughout the county. I've heard a rumor that you are looking at providing some funding for ambulance services in the county, and so I'm wondering if that's true. We can talk about this, some of this after meeting. Whatever you.
We haven't really discussed it since the meeting.
I would ask that we add that to the agenda when we meet with Taylor next Wednesday and put our heads together to determine who or whom is going to spearhead the efforts to get the EMS as a central service on track.
Yeah, and clearly, of course, we'd now miss this voting opportunity, the referendum in November. We're too late for that. And I suppose we could have a special election at some point, if it gets that.
I think it's going to be, I mean, that's going to be quite a process to even get that far, so that would be next year sometime, I'm sure.
Yes. And there needs to be a coordinated campaign of education on the public if we're going to do the levy.
Okay.
I'd be more than happy to talk to you after the meeting today. Thank you, Mr. Nunn.
Okay. Any other business? Okay.
Sure.
I think I'm asking you guys now, because we haven't really finalized my job description at this point. There's a lot of, like, extra additives that I've been doing for Ackley and a couple other communities, such as like website, annual renewal reports, that's not really economic development related. How much do you guys want me to continue to do? So we should probably put together some sort of phase-out plan.
I, right.
I agree.
Yeah. And I know you talked to me individually about this and it is concerning that, you know, if we offer doing task one, two, and three to Ackley, we need to offer task one, two, and three to Eldora and, you know, everybody else. So I think we need to, you know, again, I think that's another agenda item we can add to next Wednesday's, you know, just a study session or whatever to discuss this. So, you know, if the city of Ackley needs to, you know, maintain the continuity of those tasks, then it needs to be spelled out for them because I think it's a very slippery slope to continue to do those things when it could be implied in other communities that it needs to be done too. If that was the case, you won't have any time for site planning, site visits, those things, so, yeah. So I think if we can add that to a.
Sure.
Study session, discussion for next week.
Can we do it Tuesday? Something along that.
That's the first Tuesday in the month. That should work for me.
Yeah. We'll do, yeah, let's talk about determining the times.
The third, will that work for you, Lance?
Monday is a bad day. Yeah. Yeah.
No, she, I think she said Tuesday.
Yeah. Can we, can you give, pitch us a few different times on, after the meeting?
Did you say Monday or Tuesday?
I said Monday.
Oh, all right.
Not Labor Day.
Tuesday would work.
Do you guys want to count on Monday?
No. I don't, I don't think any of us will be here on Monday.
Tuesday should be available.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
If we're going to meet on Tuesday anyway, would it be nice to address Dave's on Tuesday, therefore we could change something if we had to on the agenda for Wednesday?
Correct.
Okay. Would that, is that okay?
Yeah.
All right.
So we just need to coordinate with Angela, Taylor, and Mayor Dunn.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. All right.